Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call.
Larry Cohen.
Here.
Betsy Dennis.
Yep.
Jennifer Edge.
Excuse me.
Christine Galva.
Excuse me.
Frank Garnett.
Here.
Georgia Patton.
Here.
Mary Beth Stevens.
Here.
Alyssa Thompson.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Dr. Bandlow, could you review the fire exits, please?
Yes, I will. The fire exits are located at the back of the theater on both sides.
Thank you. Present the workshop.
Thank you, yes. Well, tonight we have two workshop programs for presentation. First, that of our mentor presentation, and we will have Dr. Esposito and Mr. Weir, who have run this program for us, will be making that presentation. Following that, we'll have a presentation, again by Linda Esposito, regarding the Primary Literacy Intervention Program and Elementary Math Program Recommendations. These programs are on the agenda tonight. We recommend it for adoption. Our desire to do so this evening is so that we can purchase some materials, especially teacher editions, and get them in the hands of teachers before the end of the school year. It would be most helpful. So Linda, I'm going to turn it over to you and Paul.
Good evening. I wanted to begin by introducing Paul Weir. He's the Mentor Coordinator for the district. The mentoring program, I can't say enough good things about a program that helps teachers enter the profession successfully. The program has been well-spoken of, well-regarded throughout the district, and I give the credit to that to Mr. Weir, and I'd like him to have an opportunity now to introduce his mentors and mentees.
Thank you very much, Dr. Esposito. Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Bandlow, faculty, staff, community members, thank you very much for this opportunity to recognize the program that really does speak to support. I'd like to thank all the participants for the successfulness of this year's mentor program. It would not be possible to have a successful program without the participation and support of some very highly qualified mentors who have taken or added to their professional responsibilities to mentor teachers in a myriad of ways, to make them, to help them become comfortable in their role as educators. We know that, you know, educating children can be very, very rewarding. It does have its challenges, and I'm sure they can all give their stories about the challenges and rewards that they've encountered this year. Firstly, I'd like to recognize the mentors, and I'd really like to thank them for coming out this evening in support of this program, in support of their mentees as we conclude this year. I'd like to thank Kim Atwell, Robert Atwell, Karen Decandia, Michelle Arakha, Jennifer Fisher, Jim Johnson, Kathy Lyon, Philistine Oliver, Monica Paredes, Cindy Pomerico, Gloria Rosati, Jennifer Woolley. Thank you very much for your support, and I'd like to ask if we could give them a round of applause for their work. We have two groups that have been recognized with certificates this evening. Firstly, our teachers that joined us this past year, they've been with the program one year, and I'd like to call them up in alphabetical order. If your mentee for the mentors, if your mentee isn't here, I'd like you to come up to accept the certificate on their behalf. Thank you very much. And if the mentors aren't here, I'll accept it on their behalf. Tara Crowder. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Amy Heatherly. Ryan Lang. Jessica McDonald. David McPartland. Caitlin Morrison. Carol Nadu. Jennifer Pikehouse. Bonnie Stafford. And Scott Tempano. Our second group are those who have gone through the mentoring program for a second year, and I'd like to recognize the following with certificates. Ryan Antlecht.
They brought you to the fairing.
Yes. Allison Bybag. Nicole Curtin also has a commitment with Kathy. Please come up for her. Angela Zaleo. Caitlin King. Becky Shank. Rebecca Sorsy. Lauren Stoll. Talita Tomas, I know is also absent this evening, and Heather Winter. Congratulations. And thank you very much, Dr. Bandlow, for allowing us to do this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weir, for your hard work in this. Dr. Esposito, shall we go to our programs?
Sure. So, on this past Thursday night at the Education Committee meeting, we presented two different policy option briefs. The policy option briefs that you received in your board packets this weekend were prepared by Nicole Triasi as part of an administrative internship project that she worked on. But tonight, I want to present to you the two programs so that you understand what we're asking you to act to adopt this evening. Both of the programs went through a similar process in terms of how we went about selecting the program. Initially, we gathered a small group of what we considered to be experts. The group of literacy experts were district reading teachers. The group of math program experts were a committee of teachers who were assembled last school year to begin the selection process for a district math program. Each of those committees got together and assembled a list of criteria that they believed were the most important attributes of a curriculum program to be considered for adoption. Those attributes were formulated into a survey instrument. The survey instrument was reviewed by a group of administrators in the district as well as by the committee at large to determine what our priorities would be. We calculated numerically, and you can see the numerical calculations, again, in your policy option brief, four different program options for each, okay? For the primary grade literacy program, what you need to know is that that is not our entire literacy program at the elementary level. That is a Tier Two Primary Grade Literacy Intervention. We are mandated to have a formal scientifically research-based intervention as part of our response to intervention initiative, okay? Currently in district, our balanced literacy program is the Teachers College Tier One Balanced Literacy Program that every student participates in across the board. But when students fail to make progress within that program, to date, we did not have a uniform solution with which to treat students that were having difficulty. So the proposal that you see, the Wilson's Foundation proposal, is the proposal to have this intervention kit that would be used throughout the district to remediate when students were showing difficulty in their primary literacy acquisition within that program. We did consider four different programs. The Wilson's Foundation program was widely felt to be the program that counterbalanced some of the areas in which we felt that our Tier One program maybe was not the strongest insofar as the Tier One program is very based on reading comprehension, and we felt that if students in the primary grades were lacking in reading fluency, that they would benefit from a program like the Foundations program, more so than one that was additionally focused on comprehension, okay? We also felt that in terms of staff development, that this program would be able to be implemented in a way that some of the other programs that we had considered would not easily be able to be implemented with the number of other initiatives we have next year. It is a very well-regarded program, the Wilson Reading Program, and it is also a program that we use with success at the secondary level. The Foundations program is the primary literacy intervention for a program that scales from grades K to 12, okay? So that is the primary grade literacy program that we are recommending to use as our Tier Two intervention. You can see that we did include a cost for purchasing all of the component parts. Know that for both of these, we're looking to use Title Funds to address the curricular needs that we have in both reading and in mathematics, and that right now, this would be the full complement of what we believe we need. However, as we start to compare our needs for next year, because we have a lot of needs for next year, it may be the case that we will reduce these, but neither adoption will exceed the amount that you see here. So that was the Wilson's Foundation Tier Two Literacy Intervention Program. For mathematics, last year, many different programs were considered, many of them considered to be reform-oriented programs in nature. Form-oriented programs are very different than traditional math programs and require a great deal of staff development to implement. Because of the number of staff development initiatives that we have being new at the beginning of next school year, we began our research into a new program this year by saying that we needed something that we could implement without a great deal of staff development. Of the four programs that we considered, the Envision Math Program, again, through survey methods and with multiple committees meeting, was determined to have extremely high-quality resources for differentiating classroom instruction and for Tier Two interventions for struggling learners, keeping in mind that currently, we have a 1998 copyright Scott Forsen-Addison-Wesley program in district that has not been used with a great deal of fidelity. So right now, we're looking for a Tier One math program that every student uses and a Tier Two intervention component that goes with it to help the students who show that they are struggling with the program. So the adoption that you see for Pearson and Envision for grades K to five is a program that would be both Tier One, the entire math program, and Tier Two, an intervention component for students who are struggling. The program packaging to this program was another attribute that teachers felt made it more desirable than some of the others that it was being compared to. In terms of functionality, many of the other programs that were out there were 100% consumable, so if a student used it this school year and wrote in it, we would have to buy an entirely new program the following school year. We decided that that would not be a cost-effective option moving forward, okay? Some of the others had both textbook and workbook components embedded within them. That was another attribute that teachers didn't want to send kids home with both the textbook and the workbook, and assumed that both would come back the following day. So in terms of functionality, this program, we felt was functional. We thought that it did what it needed to do in terms of differentiating instruction and the ability of having a Tier One intervention for struggling learners. As you can see in the policy option brief, it received the highest rating of all four programs, as did the Wilson Foundations of the four programs it was being compared with. And we feel confident in both of our recommendations being things that will improve learning for our students. Anyone have questions about either of the two programs?
Just a comment, Linda. I want to thank you for a very, very thorough job that you and Nicole and the members of both committees followed an extremely rigorous protocol in your examination of possible programs. You did a very, very thorough job in considering all the pros and cons of each, and I believe the recommendations are very sound. We had a good discussion in our Education Committee last Thursday with the members and others who were present at that meeting, and I think that the questions were robust and that they showed the strength of the work of what you've done. So I think it's a very, very sound, not only sound recommendations, but I think this adoption is probably the single most important thing we can do this year that's going to set us toward some real serious improvement and achievement going forward.
If you don't mind, I just wanted to comment. I know that for a while, the Education Committee has had concerns about RTI, and one of the things that both of these programs have here are the Tier Two type of resources for the students. It also has ways to measure the progress of the students. And I think the other thing that we liked is that no matter what school, elementary school you were in, you were getting the same program. So being a small city school, we have, you know, a lot of children moving in and out of the district, and we even have children that move within schools in our own district. So a student that, you know, is here and may move out of the district for a little bit, but was in Sargent School and then comes back and maybe is in Glennum, it's the same program that they're used to. So there were, you know, a number of factors that they looked into, and as Dr. Bandlow said, it was really a comprehensive study of the different things that were in front of us. As Linda mentioned, most of the cost is going to be addressed through Title One grants. And as you can see here, that the math program was last introduced in 1998. So, you know, I just want to commend Nicole and everyone that was involved in there, and I thought we had some nice discussions at the Education Committee meeting. And it was recommended that it be brought to an open meeting because it does affect the teachers. They have a new, pretty much, math curriculum that they're going to have to get in place by September, and to also let parents know that, you know, there's going to be some changes and modifications in it.
And as Dr. Bandlow stated earlier, the initiative to bring it to the full board only the Monday after the Thursday meeting was really to make sure that we can get instructional materials in teachers' hands before they leave at the end of the school year, because there are so many new initiatives coming up in September.
I have a question. I agree with all the statements thus far regarding, you know, the need for the programs, the research done. Nicole, what an amazing job, your presentation. And Linda, you know, I attended the Education Committee. I'm worried about the dollar value. I'm worried about, you know, July 1 starts the new school year, and then you mentioned Title One funds. Well, I'm a Glennum family, and we're not entitled to Title One funds.
Right, yes.
So do we have this from a financial standpoint all mapped out in our business office, or is this something that we're still working on?
Right now, I've looked at what we have left of title funding from this year and what I would project that we will have next year, and believe that we will be able to implement both.
But what happens to the building that isn't entitled to Title One funds?
Every building will receive these resources. We will purchase them with district funds.
But how do you pay for those funds for Glennum if Glennum's not entitled to Title One funding?
Right. We will work out the Glennum part of it.
So then Glennum's not going to get paid for out of Title One funding?
Right. We'll come up with another approach.
And this has been worked through in the business office. I guess that's my concern, that we have this mapped out in the business office prior to make any types of approvals. We need to know that the funding is there and available so that we can move forward, and if it's not, then perhaps we need to table it until we're able to ensure that.
At this point, I would say that because we put a maximum cost on it and not the exact cost, we haven't worked out the details of how much the proposal will be at this point. So if you'd like that to be the details of it for the next meeting, we can do that and table it if you wish.
You know, based on math, it would be $40,000 that's not covered potentially under the, you know, Title One number. You know, I don't know, you know, business office-wise, I think that, you know, the slush fund or whatever could cover, you know...
You know, so is it coming out of this year's funding, or is it coming out of next year's funding?
The bulk of it should be this year's funding. What's left open for this year's funding?
Just my opinion, to hold up, you know, a Tier Two RTI process where our elementary school children are failing, you know, on the New York State report card, I think even though it's not, a portion of it would not be covered by Title One, I think it's probably, you know, money well spent. You're talking about 700 children that are going to be benefited from a Tier One, Tier Two educational program.
I don't think anybody's challenging the validity of the program. I think from what I read in the presentation, it looks like it's a great program for us. I'm more concerned...
About the details of the funding?
About the details of the funding. Yeah, about the details of the funding. Some of it's coming this year, some is coming from next year budget. I don't want to put Anne Murray on the spot, but I'm going to. Sorry.
Go ahead.
And I don't know if you have the answers or not, because I'm putting you on the spot.
Okay.
So I apologize in advance. Do we actually have Title One funding money left over this year to pay for this program? And if you're...
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's a reasonable answer.
We have rollover money. I don't know, you know, I didn't know how much this was until today, so I don't know. And I know that the piece of Glennum has to come out of the general fund.
Okay, and do we have, well, it's stupid. Of course, even if we don't have it, we have it, because if we're going to go with the program, we're going to pay for it for Glennum, because we're not excluding old schools. That's ridiculous. I'm not even going to ask that question. I'm more concerned about the Title One funding, if that's what the object was in order to pay for this. So is it, you can't get an answer in the next 15 minutes, can you?
No. But from a finance, but from an accounting standpoint, is it easier for an approval tonight and try to work those numbers now when July 1 is, you know, right around the corner? Would it be easier to wait for approval at our reorg meeting so that all of those ducks can be in a row? You know, everyone knows I come from an accounting standpoint, so I need, you know, confidence that you're rolling up the year right now. You're trying to get those things done. Is it better for you that we wait for those approvals? One of the things that the business office is working on this week is to try to tighten up the title, all of the grants, the special ed grants and the title grants. So we are currently working on that to see what is available, what won't be spent by June 30th, and what could be rolled over. So that's a process that's happening this week, and we're also trying to figure out how much of the general fund is left and how much we could roll over. So between now and the next board meeting, we would have a better idea, and, you know, if the board is asking for specific budget codes as to where it's coming from, then that would be a better time to do that.
And I think that's the answer, that if you do want that level to know exactly where it's coming from, we can't give that to you tonight.
That's true.
However, we do know, and we have had conversations about where we are with the rollover, that we will have some surpluses, and we do have some funds available that we can use for this purpose, and we can use it this year. So we do know that the funds are there, even though we cannot tell you specifically fund numbers or exactly how much would come from Title and how much from which other accounts. It's not unusual to combine in a purchase like this, especially with Title Funds, funds from one year with another year, to make a purchase of this magnitude. That is routine.
I don't think that anyone is questioning the process. I think the question, you know, we're not talking about 20 grands. We're talking about $164,000 that we need to ensure that all those ducks are in a row. We're not talking about a small dollar amount, and I think, I don't want anyone to feel as though I'm nitpicking. That's a dollar amount that we, as board members, are, you know, voted to watch those numbers and to ensure that we're doing our best to be on top of that. So I just wanted to clear that up. I don't want anyone to think, I truly believe that our children need these programs. There's absolute value in them. I've done my research on both. I attended the education... I attended the education committee meeting. There is in no way that I'm saying I'm not for these programs. I'm saying we need to ensure that we have all the pieces lined up prior to approval so that when we say, when we approve the expense, we can move straightforward with the purchase.
But I guess my question on that is that by approving the program, we're then sending it back to the administrative building to take care of the financial part. I, I don't know in the past where we have put an approval contingency on the board office telling us, you know, what fund is the money coming out of. I think that they would come back to us at the next meeting saying, you know, we're not able to fund this program that you put, that they presented to us. So I'm not necessarily comfortable saying that I can't approve the program until you tell me, you know, what accounting code it's coming out of.
Mary Beth, you know something? You're, you're right. However, we've also never been given something to approve after it was decided three days ago. We've always approved things over a period of weeks with a presentation by the committee to the board at large with discussion, and that's because of the, the speed at which this is needed, has needed to be done, that step has been missed. So things are all different.
Question.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first, I'm, I'm sorry, but let me, I just want to, until I got the packet, I had no idea that this was going to be done. And if I didn't look at my packet until Sunday, because I was away, I wouldn't know about it until yesterday, so that we were doing this. Typically, when we've had presentations by the education committee on new curriculum, on new textbooks, new whatever, a presentation was made by building administration, by the, by the committee, to the rest of the board. It was a larger discussion, it was a workshop, and there was a lot of information conveyed, and then the decision was made a week or two later for adoption. So in case there was any question about economics or whatever, those things were remedied beforehand. We've never been put in the position of having to approve something without having the opportunity and the luxury of time to ask the questions before voting on it. So that's different.
Well, I would say prior, prior to you coming on, we have had that.
Well, I'm in my third term. It hasn't happened since I'm here.
Because I haven't been looking at it.
Yeah, question. And one of the, one of the reasons for wanting to get it adopted tonight was so that an order could be placed and materials could be given to teachers. Is there a possibility for ordering materials for teachers? I mean, because obviously, the majority of this is the, is the student materials.
Right now, we can't, we can't place an order for materials till the board acts to adopt the programs. So if we want to table that tonight, then I need to wait until the next board meeting to order materials for teachers, which likely means they will not have them before the end of school year.
Right. Any, any, do you have any feel for what, what, ordering materials for teachers only, what that cost is?
It would be significantly reduced, but-
I assume it would be sensitive.
Yeah, but, right, yes, because-
Majority of this is going to be student materials.
But right now, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you that offhand.
And also, what prohibits us from distributing materials to teachers after June 30th?
A lot of them are not around?
Yeah.
It's during the summer, you don't see a lot of teachers.
I appreciate that, but I mean, I think that we could find a way to give the information to people. The post office is still in business.
Right, but I, I don't think we would be mailing them to teachers at a cost in this district.
I mean, I would suggest, if nothing else, you know, approval for the purchasing of the, you know, the teaching materials.
You know, I appreciate your suggestion, Bill, and I'm only wondering, would there be additional cost to us if we bought teaching materials separately? In other words, would we fail to take advantage of some discount of, of quantity, you know, by only buying a small amount as opposed to buying the full program? Sometimes teacher materials come along at no, at no charge, you know, if you, if you buy more than X number of student materials. And I don't know what the case is with this particular purchase, and I'm not sure you've even looked at that for the same.
Yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just want to come back to Anne Marie and, and, and as to, just to clarify, is there any doubt in your mind that we have funds available for this purpose?
I-
Or is the only question just exactly where the funds would, would, would come out, what lines?
I think the board asked me two questions. One question was whether we had the federal money available and whether we had general fund money.
Yes, they did.
And I know I mentioned to you that we do have money in the general fund-
Correct.
-which we're trying to allocate. My question is the federal.
Yes.
And if that's where the significant amount of money is, I think that I want to make sure. I wouldn't feel confident in telling you or the board without looking at what qualifies under Title One and what can be used this year and next year. So that's, you know, if we were going to pay for it all out of the general fund, it would be a different story, it would be a significant amount of money. But the federal grants are specific, and I, I'm a little concerned more about exactly what we can allocate to that.
Well, do we, if, if, you know, worst-case scenario where none of the title fund money is, can be used for this, then it would all come out of the general fund, and is, you know, when we did the budget for this year, how, how much money was allocated for, for textbooks?
We allocate textbooks based on the amount of money that we get from the state, which is $57.50 a child. So that, that would be the whole allocation of textbooks across the whole district.
Okay.
If you do the math, you said 57 per student? If you just looked at it from a textbook standpoint, the entire program would be covered by our textbook allocation.
Yeah, doesn't permit you to buy another textbook for anything else in the district for the year.
At the elementary level, you're getting-
For the whole year for anybody in this whole district.
No, I'm only talking about the, the, if you do 57 by the amount of elementary students we have, this program's completely covered. And I don't see us buying any more than a literacy program and a math program within one school year.
I, I have no idea. I can't be the judge of what of the textbooks are needed through the year, certainly the room departments and that sort of thing.
I just think that we are really at a turning stone with turning up the elementary student achievement. So I understand individuals concerned for, you know, a little bit more information, but I think the next time we meet, we're still going to, to vote yes for this, or that you don't feel as if the $164,000 is worth trying to make that, you know, step into RTI and Tier Two advancement at the elementary school level.
I mean, I can tell you that as we look at budget codes, et cetera, we are going to propose exactly what we can afford. So if we need to reduce parts of the program so that we have a smaller number of resources, shared resources or what have you, we will do that, but we're not going to change which programs we're proposing to adopt. We're just going to change the amount of what we're going.
Any other questions?
Can you take any from the audience?
Yeah, sure.
I have a question. I also want to comment on the, the belief that I, I think there is a real need for the programs at the elementary level. Just some things to think about, and Linda, if I could ask you, is there an expectation? I know we're talking about getting materials to teachers by June 30th. Is that, is that an indication that there's an expectation for teachers to study and learn the new reading and the math programs over the summer and be prepared to roll out Day One in September, given the timeliness of all of this?
Right.
So that, that's my first question. The second question is, I was also at the education committee meeting, I did get to speak to some teachers after the meeting, you know, I followed up with the membership, and some of the, the questions and concerns that teachers did have outside of the think tank, because there's a lot of, you know, K5 math literacy teachers that were not part of the think tank and are unaware of the program. Obviously, they're waiting for emails from me to, to give them some feedback. Is there going to be any extraneous costs to, to the district, or is there an expectation that there would be in-service available in professional development available for the teachers over the summer to, to prepare? Are they going to self-teach themselves with these programs and be prepared in September to roll out a curriculum? Would there be curriculum writing opportunities and is that cost, those costs all tied in? Just, just something to think about, because, you know, I'm a teacher and I know teachers, they'll get the material, it'll be great for a day or two, and then, like Bill said, after July, I mean, you know, sometimes it's hard to even get ahold of people. So what is the expectation over the summer, and how is the district going to, or prepare themselves to, you know, allocate money for those type of trainings that I would think need to happen? Because when we start September, you know, with the APPR, there's a lot, a lot, a lot more than just peas on the plate. I mean, there's a lot to be dealing with, that teachers will be working on their own to try to get themselves to understand the dynamics of movement and so on and so forth. So just some things to think about, and if you guys have any, you know, anything on that.
Right. No training over the summer would be a required training. There will be optional, different types of training that teachers can engage in through the course of the summer if they choose.
So, so the district's going to, to make that available?
Yes.
Or if any teacher has-
There are online trainings and those sorts of things that teachers can take advantage of through the course of the summer if they choose to. However, all teachers will receive training during those days beginning at the end of August next year. They will receive full days of training in the implementation of the math program at that time.
So that, as well as the APPR training as well?
Yes, we've got many, many trainings that will be happening at that time.
So there is going to be availability for teachers to be paid over the summer to do the training?
I don't know yet in terms of payment of, but there will be optional training available to teachers, that they can choose to take advantage of if they wish.
Okay.
There's online training available.
So it, it, it may be voluntary, you'd say?
It may be voluntary, correct.
So that would not necessarily constitute that every teacher would be prepared to come and enroll up?
That's correct, because we can't mandate training over the summer.
Right. Unless, of course, you know, you're, you're paying it, and then you, you get more people to come. So it's just questions that have come up since Thursday, and I've kind of sent out some information to the teachers to get some feedback, you know, in terms, and these are some of the questions that have come up, you know, what's going to be the expectation? Great, they get the materials before the end of the school year, but then what are we looking at time-wise here in terms of preparation, you know, for, for September? And is the expectation going to be the program will roll out Day One in September?
Right. Well, the expectation would be that the teachers will have the materials the week before school starts, and that they will roll it out in the way that they deem appropriate. It's an instructional resource, it's not the curriculum.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular person, and the board will return as soon as possible. Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.